Order it's six o'clock. Exact, I believe.
Yep.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Town and Dye Board of Health Regular Meeting for Wednesday. July twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. Just as a word of caution, this is being audio and video recorded for our future broadcast on our cable channel, plus it will be also broadcast on YouTube in the future, so. If you wouldn't mind standing and join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
One of our members, Mr. Benato, and I'll be here this evening, so just to save some time, I will be stepping down the second of motions as they come up. And I'll also be voting, since there are only two members this evening, so. It's six oh one, I suppose now, so hearings at six oh five, so we should probably wait for that. But if you'd make a motion, Matt, to take the season's business out of order?
Yeah, I'm sure moved.
Okay, second emotion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Why don't we do four B? Since I don't think there's really anything new on that.
North Dayton. I haven't had any calls on North Dayton.
We haven't been able to.
No, I did, I did reach out to the property owner. He's willing to come down, but his time that he's available is extremely limited. So he had told me that late mornings were best, because he typically has doctor's appointments in the afternoon. So I think if the board were willing to give me a couple of times and dates that were available, I'll try to nail him down.
Sure.
I know Tuesdays aren't good for you, so I didn't want to speak for you when I was.
Yeah, Mondays, well, not Mondays during the summer now, but primarily Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday?
Yeah, you're not here Fridays, so.
Right. And we can make an exception if need be, but we'll try to do it on a Wednesday or a Thursday.
And you said afternoon?
No.
Late morning?
If it has to be a Monday, I could do it Monday, or Tuesday.
Okay.
I just need, I just need to know.
Why don't we, alright, so we got Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, COVID stays is available too.
Okay.
Todd's available, so.
Give him a trace any day next week.
Yeah.
Not available next week, but.
You're not available. Okay, the following.
I won't be here next, the following.
I'll be, I'll be around.
Alright.
So next week, Monday, Tuesday, I suppose.
Okay.
You don't need me to do it, you can go out.
I'll say you need a.
Alright.
Available dates.
I'll work on it.
Okay. Okay, why don't we, it's pretty close to six oh five, I don't believe that any of the public's gonna show up for the variance request. So why don't we open a public, the public hearing, variance request for twenty-six seventy-three Park Avenue?
No, it's a two-page lot.
Oh, it's a three-page. That's my page? Two-page.
You have two pages?
Two pages, yeah.
Do I have the publication to read?
It's the second page. Oh, the, the, it's not a.
Alright, notification.
Okay, we just, notice to the butters.
Okay, wasn't in paper?
Doesn't have, no, no.
Okay. I'll read the notice that was sent out to the butters. Dear butter, the Dyson Board of Health will be holding a public hearing on a variance request by Andrew Dyer for twenty-six seventy-three Park Avenue, map twenty-five, lot two eleven. The applicant is seeking a variance from the following section of Title V, three-ten CMR, section fifteen, point two-one-one, minimum setback distances. Applicant seeks a reduction of the distance from the existing water line to the existing soil absorption system from ten feet to eight feet along the Wesley side and nine feet along south and east side of system. Due to the limited area available on site and the location of the existing water line connection, the current distance requirement was not met. The applicant proposes to install a forty-mil polyvinyl barrier between the soil absorption system and the existing water line. The top of the barrier will be placed at the same elevation as the top of the soil absorption system and will continue to a depth of one foot below the existing water line. Public hearing will be taking place on July twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, at six oh five in Old Town Hall, upper level meeting room located at eleven-eleven Somerset Avenue, Dyson, Mass. Zero-two-seven-one-five. Interested parties are encouraged to attend. Must be six oh five now after reading that.
Oh, yeah.
So, basically.
The applicant's here with us.
He's.
Mr. Coska come up and explain what's going on here?
For the record, my name is Michael Coska. I did the engineering at twenty-six seventy-three. Here are the butter cards, there was three sent out, and with the white slips there, I got two of them back, and the postal service has not told me that, you know, the third one was unclaimed or whatever. What's going on here is you have a, a small lot that we're trying to fit a house on adjacent to the Taunton River at twenty-six seventy-three Park Avenue. And the water line was running the front instead of the side. There's about an eight-foot separation there, and the applicant would put the impervious barrier between the system and the water line. I've been doing engineering for about forty years, and I've never heard of a town service or water line being contaminated by septic system. I've never heard of it. And my wife was water health agent in Bridgewater before I left tonight, trying to prepare myself mentally, I asked her the question, and she never encountered that either. I don't know if any of the board members have or taught as a, in private practice or, you know, being the agent for the Board of Health has, you know, heard of, you know, that occurrence happening. If you had a well situation, well, a well is a suction line, but the water line is under pressure from, you know, from the street. And so we're hoping the board would allow us to install the impervious barrier. And Mr. Dyer will be living in the house along with other members of his family, and I'm sure that if there was any situation, a problem, he would, you know, rectify it for the health and safety of his family. And not only that, but, you know, he's a contractor and he, and he can, you know, rectify, you know, these types of things. But I don't, I don't see it as, I've never heard of it as an issue on either old houses or, or anything like that, so. That's, we're here asking the board if they would give us some consideration. Thank you.
We had got a variance on this property, correct, to, to put the structure there?
Yeah, we went to the zoning, the zoning board of appeals, yes. And we also went through the Conservation Commission, and we met all of the regulations and went through all the channels. There wasn't anything that was overloaded.
The area of the property.
Yeah, I just went by there tonight.
But this is before the demolition.
Okay.
So the structure actually looks like it may have come out almost to where it is back, put back in place.
What was there before, is that cool?
No, there was a septic system there, and it wasn't utilized because it was, it was on the outside. And that's where the garage is, and I believe that it wasn't designed to withstand H-twenty loading, so we took that one out and we put a new one in.
How long's the water line been there? I've not, you know, I've never heard of it happening either, but.
How long's the water line been there? The water line that runs through Park out, I don't know that it's been upgraded since it was installed.
In the fifties?
Yeah, fifties or sixties, right. I don't know that for certain, but I, I'm not aware of any upgrades that have been done down there.
Okay.
Chairman, I don't have any issue granting the variance, provided that impervious barrier be put in just as an extra precautionary measure should.
Yeah.
I would, there be any issues with the water line going forward, I just ask if our health agent has any comment.
No, the only thing is because it's a variance for new construction, the standard review says that with regard to variances for new construction, enforcement of the provision from which a variance is sought must be shown to deprive the applicant of substantially all beneficial use of the subject property in order to be considered manifestly unjust. So it is a new construction, so the standard's obviously much higher.
But I don't, I don't see where else, I mean, to, to try and reroute this water line, then you're gonna be fighting with, with the tank and.
Well, you got the reserve area on the other side.
Yeah, no matter what you do, it's, it's gonna be an issue, and there was an existing house on the lot, so it's new construction, but it's not a, a brand-new, new construction lot, so.
Any final comments, want to say? No? I don't see a problem with it either, then it's only, only a four or two, and the barrier there, I think it would.
I would, I would do it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to allow the variance requested for the minimum setback distances, the reduction distance from the existing water line to the existing SAS from ten feet to eight feet. On the Wesley side, nine feet along south and east side of the system, provided an impervious barrier be installed for the plant.
Second emotion? Any further discussion from anyone? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? An exception, there's nobody left to vote, okay. Motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second motion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I oppose. Okay, I'll say.
I thank you very much.
Good night.
This trash, I got one for five.
Shops container pricing. We talked about this a couple meetings back.
We did, we kicked it around, that we charge, what we charge for shops containers basically covers the price to buy them. The price for disposal comes out to a couple dollars a container, if we can get enough containers in the box, we usually try and do three boxes at a time, because it's like a seventy-five dollar pickup charge. So basically, I'm suggesting that we should go up with the prices. Right now, a quart is three dollars, we don't sell very many of those at all. Gallon is six dollars, we sell a fair number of those, but the two gallon is eight dollars. So I don't know, I mean, whether we go to like four, eight, and twelve, or keep it at ten dollars or something, I just, I think we should cover a little bit of our costs, but I don't wanna make people not buy the containers and use them and use us, but I think we need to at least make sure we're covering cost of services here, so.
I mean, these, these prices have been the same for a very long time, the cost of everything has gone up. And I don't even think you can buy that, those containers for those prices at CVS or anything even, so.
I believe we looked into that, and it was like the same or like a dollar more, like to buy at a CVS or whatever.
That's just to buy the container, I mean, here you're getting the container and the disposal of it, so. I, I, I think that the four, eight, and twelve is very reasonable, and it should probably be something that's reevaluated, you know, every, every other year.
Right.
As prices change and like that, so.
You know, I was looking on, I think it was a DEP website for our game tonight, that we are the only community that offers them for sale within ten miles.
Really?
Yep.
Okay.
And Ashley?
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Am I correct in saying that if someone buys it from iHaveLamont.com up here right now, and they bring it to us, we have to take it, is that correct?
Well, that was my next area of discussion I wanted to get into. I don't know how free go, I know I, I took one in once that we weren't selling, and we should probably consider a charge for turning it into us.
You mean like put like a Dyson sticker on it, and they can bring it back for free? But if it's somebody else's, they charge them a fee, like five dollars or something to bring it back?
Yes. I, I don't know about those parameters, but I would say if we're buying containers, I think we can buy a sticker for ten cents, put a sticker on it. That's a sticker that we know we sold, so we take it back free of charge. However, if it doesn't have the sticker, then yes, I think there should be a charge. I see no reason why someone should be able to go for, to Walmart and buy it for two dollars cheaper and then bring it and have a Dyson taxpayer pay to get rid of it.
But we want people to bring their shops.
How about we just make them show us proof of residency, so we know they're a Dyson resident? Because people walk in and just bring us a box and say, okay.
It's, it's a service that does not have to be provided. It's not a mandatory service, so.
And we're talking token fees here, we're not talking thirty dollars.
Yeah, just to try and offset a little bit of the cost. If you do four, eight, and twelve on, you know, these, I mean, probably your average size is either gonna be a half gallon or a gallon. I'd probably, usually probably a gallon size, either laundry container like that. I mean, I would say, you know, you bring your own in, it's, you know, split the difference between like a half, between the quarter, you got fi, five dollars, you get a sticker, you put it on, you take it.
So, I'm sorry, how much is the gallon container that we sell right now?
Sixty.
Six.
But we're gonna go up to.
It's six, we're going to eight.
Walmart.com is ten-twenty-six for a gallon container, and that doesn't include tax, because we're.
Or disposal.
Or disposal.
So you're already lower.
What's the two-gallon container?
Right. I'm sorry. That is the two-gallon container. I'm not on Walmart.com offering, so what is, that is two-gallon.
Right now, it's, right now, our two-gallon is eight.
Yeah.
Even if we were to go to twelve, by the time you pay tax and everything else, it's right about the same.
And it comes with free disposal.
Right, but you get a disposal for it, and that's where your big money is.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to, I mean, there's no way we're cheaper than Walmart.com. If we can stay competitive with them, I can't see anyone saying, for fifty cents, I'm not gonna bring my shops containers, my shops back to the Board of Health, you know? I get what you're saying, because if it's not affordable, we don't want them in the bucket of trash, I understand that. But we're talking about fifty cents to a dollar here, all we're trying to do is cover the cost.
So again, we still thinking, like, raise the price of the, the things, and include, if you buy it here, you get the free disposal, and then if you don't buy it here, make it.
The sticker idea is probably the best bet.
Is what I, what I suggest.
Stick around, and we know.
Yep.
They bought it from us, and just started.
So my, my thought is, we change the, the price of our current containers to four, eight, and twelve, and then we have stickers available for you to bring your own container in, sticker is five dollars for a one-gallon size or under. If you bring a two-gallon in, then you pay for two stickers. And then you can bring it in, you put the stickers on it, you put it in the box.
You lost me on that one. The stickers.
So you don't buy the container from us, you buy it from somewhere else, so you bring a laundry.
It's basically like the, you buy a sticker from us, we go right on the shops container and put the shops container in.
Okay.
Just to cut, because it's, you know, the cost of disposal.
So you want five dollars for a gallon or smaller, and ten dollars for two gallons or larger?
And it's still.
You'd sell a lot more of these containers then, because people will come here.
We'll be selling more, yeah.
But we're not making money on them, so.
We still, we still lose money even on that pricing, but, you know, that way.
But like, say, we can reinvestigate the prices a year from now, and then.
I think you should reassess the pricing every year, and I, I told you when we discussed this, the way I, I looked at my department is I tried to cover the costs, and without, keeps us in the black of the green, I think we, we need to try to do the same thing.
Yeah, because we're definitely in the red here, so.
Right.
We should look at, I was looking at a few good companies that do collect them, like Stericycle sells them and collects them.
Very expensive.
Yeah, probably. But I don't know, five and ten, what to return is, sounds to me a little steep.
Does sound steep to me too, but.
I'd go like with three and five, maybe.
I think Matt's plan of keeping it the same price makes it the easiest to deal with. If you disagree with the two stickers for a two gallon, then just make it one sticker for all, for all.
Five bucks?
Five bucks.
Or, or maybe get three and six, as opposed to three and five, so it's two stickers. Three and six to me sounds more reasonable, but I know.
Listen, we're all busy, let's keep it as simple as possible.
Five dollars a gallon is the size of the container?
Yeah, I'll buy that, yeah.
That's fine. Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to change the, the pricing of our shops disposal containers, four dollars for the one quart, eight dollars for the one gallon, and twelve dollars for the two-gallon containers, and also add the charge of five dollars if you bring your own container in to cover the cost of disposal.
A second emotion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carries. Now that we have to run this through the selectmen, I wonder?
I don't see why we would.
I think we're supposed to, but.
Set the fees.
I'll take that back. We, we can ask, we can't hurt the reasons.
Yeah.
We sell about, what, three containers a month, so it's not like we're in a hurry to take care of it, so.
Item four C, we review this as an act hazardous waste collection day, or not?
Well, I had a little bit of luck with this, this past week. I did not hear from Amanda, so I reached out to her. She actually is in law school for environmental law, she's no longer with Stericycle, but she gave me contact info, and he got back to me today. He'll talk to us Monday about dates for the fall.
So why didn't they?
He never got the, like, my email to her, it never got picked back, it never got voted to him.
Mike Wedge got back to you too, right?
Mike Wedge got back to me with a couple of dates, and Clean Harbors got back to me that they have nothing until spring. So if Stericycle and Mike Wedge, can we go with two bits? So as long as we can get coordinating dates, then they can.
Well, if you send out three, and we don't get two back, so that's.
Oh, okay.
You know, so send it out again, tell them.
Alright, as soon as I talk to him Monday.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, number five, A, no business, we review this as an act primetime emergency generator testing. You wanna speak to this, or may you? Go ahead.
The generator, the registered generator. Oh, yes. So a couple things. The, at the request of the chairman, and rightfully so, he was concerned about the heat wave we recently had, made sure that there was someplace that we could have available to people who needed to cool, i.e. a cooling center. So we came in early Saturday morning before the heat started and took primetime offline voltage, which is off the power grid. The building responded flawlessly, the generator came on in the amount of time that's required, and ran the entire building, including the HVAC systems.
Nice.
So it was an effective test, and it was obviously the place that we need to go to in the future. That said, I had thought that maybe we needed an action to debt, to, to name that place as the cooling and warming center. As I was reading our minutes from the emergency preparedness meeting in January, we had already done that. We had already designated that as the warming center. So I think this should just be as an update for the board, an update to the public, that it seems like that building will be used for our warming and cooling centers in the future.
The generator can work for the heating as well as the cooling?
Yes, yes.
I think we should get an agreement with primetime.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to have a written agreement with primetime.
For damage or anything, you know, the town be responsible and so forth, but.
And that said, so everybody home knows, it's up to the, this board, the Board of Health, as to whether that center will be open or not. So just because we have an event doesn't mean it will be automatically opened. It'll take an act of this board to open that to the public.
So the agreement with primetime, is that something we're gonna draft up? Is that something Mallory does?
I would probably talk to Mallory, because it's a town-related issue.
They'll figure out, I mean, she should be able. You know, no problem with this board, but. Chief McGee being the emergency preparedness, and the, so he may wanna be the, the one.
You're right, I mean, if we're bringing public into that building, this board has to be involved, because now we're, we're, you know, we're bringing people from the outside into a public building, make sure we have proper facilities, et cetera, et cetera.
Question, can they bring animals in?
That's up to the ACO.
Service animals?
Service animals only, I would think, at this point.
That may pose a problem with the daily activities of that building, where if people have allergies to animals, that may cause a trickle effect.
It's a cooling warming center, it's not a shelter, so.
Right. But if they've got a service animal that they have with them, we cannot deny them.
Correct.
Yeah, we had decided only, we would open it if we had lost power, and we didn't, I had the keys all weekend, never got a call, and so it was, I mean, it doesn't happen often, but I've seen where we've lost power in significant heat, heat waves, so. Okay. We're gonna be discussing this again next Tuesday.
Yes.
That meeting, so. Moving on, if I B, revised kennel bylaw. For those of you who were at the town meeting, this failed miserably.
Well, it didn't fail miserably as much as it needed to be rewritten, because people were confused on what it said. And I even recommended somebody near me to ta, to table it, so we could rewrite it, so it didn't pose that problem.
I did change a couple of things. I did act, I added the definition of a kennel. And this is the state definition, there's a little more to it, but people, one of the problems, I think, that evening was people visualize a kennel as a structure of concrete and steel.
Most of the people around me were more concerned, it didn't specify, it said you needed a kennel license if you had five dogs. And see, you don't need a kennel license if you have one, two, or three dogs. And that's where the sticking point was around, that people were talking to me, this isn't specific enough, it doesn't say if you have four or more dogs, you need to have a kennel license, it says if you have up, up to five dogs, you need to have a kennel license.
So how's this one?
So this is four or more dogs? So they can have a hundred dogs?
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna have to, because we're gonna limit this at some point.
Well, there is a commercial limitation.
But this is under the residential one I was looking at, but, okay, but yeah, it's commercial too.
Collection of four dogs or more dogs that are owned and kept under a single, well, the acre thing is the, but we were talking not to have more than five dogs on the property because of the.
That became an issue too.
Pack, I think so, but.
So are you talking, you're talking for a commercial entity?
We're talking about a residential entity at this point.
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with having five, no more than five dogs, changing the wording to no more than five dogs.
You need to have a collection of, if you have a collection of four or more dogs, well, we have to figure out.
So it's either four or five, right? Those are the only two numbers.
Four or five, right, on less than an acre. Uh, maybe allowed on, on less than an acre, but I thought it was an acre or less. Up to an acre, we needed an acre.
But if you've got five acres on a residential lot, how many dogs can you have? Still four or five, right?
Just four or five, unless it's a commercial. Why would you put in the size of the lot, what does that matter? If it's a house on. Because you have some people that, let's take North Dayton for an example, I got a call the other day, somebody has a cow on a property that's like a postage stamp. A cow? That's not allowed. Because, not only because you can't have a cow on that kind of property, because it's not gonna survive, but because of the neighbors. So if you have five dogs in North Dyson on Bedford Street, or six dogs or seven dogs, that's a problem, because they don't have a place to run, they don't have a place. But if you have an acre of land, you have more of, not on top of each other, I gotta, kinda thing.
So for a residential kennel, if you've got a half an acre of land. So for a residential kennel, if you've got a half an acre of land, this is saying you can have four or five dogs. But if you've got five acres of land, it doesn't say assignment right now.
Right.
So we need to say that more than an acre, you can have up to, from four to nine dogs?
This, all this does is, is trigger the need for a special permit.
Right.
That's a, that it can be reviewed and ultimately it'll be up to, I mean, if you have five acres, but four and a half of them are wetlands that you, you can't be, shapes the dogs through, then that would, you know.
Would change.
No, I know, but this right now just says four dogs on less than an acre of land. That's all it says, so again, if you've got three acres of land, how many dogs can you have, it doesn't say, so that's a loophole needs to be closed, you know.
The number of dogs will be on a case by case basis.
Have as many as you want.
But there's still gonna be a limit though, right? I'm assuming we're still not gonna go above like nine on a residential property?
I think we need to discuss it more, because, um, I know there are some people out there that have six dogs that have had kennel licenses forever, um, that have six Chihuahuas in the house that nobody knows about. But, um, I think this needs to be discussed more on the residential.
I think it's a stark improvement from the last one.
Yes.
But I think it still needs to be reworked a little bit. It's the only way it's gonna.
And that's fine, but, uh, we don't meet again for another month. I'd like to see this go on the fall meeting.
I don't think it can, can it? It's a bylaw change, I didn't, I thought it was only annual, because a bylaw change could be brought forth. Right.
Okay.
So we've got a law.
But we need to keep this move, we gotta keep discussing it and get it where it needs to go.
This needs to go to the planning board first, so.
So is the commercial definition okay? How much did that change from what it was? It just says you have to have at least five acres to have a commercial kennel license. And it doesn't say what zone you're in, but I'm assuming that is, has to be in a business zone.
Established in the bylaws.
Right, so we're not changing that, that's already set. The kennel definition is new, a pack of collection of dogs on a single premise. Kennel license, keeping four or more dogs to obtain a kennel license, that seems to make sense.
Now, you can, you can opt to get a kennel license if you only have three dogs.
Well, I do have somebody in town that gets hers all the time. She used to breed dogs or show dogs, um, she only has three dogs in her house at this point. But she's afraid to not have a kennel license, just in case something changes. Um, so.
So I like the question that you raised about the maximum amount of dogs, because I think that's important. Historically, a day, and you've been doing this for quite some time, what's the maximum amount of dogs you've seen at a licensed facility?
At a licensed facility that's not a breeding kennel?
Yes.
Not counting puppies.
Right.
Right, six.
So fairly low.
Cause these are pets we're talking about.
Yes, these are pets, um.
Now, if you have a breeding facility, and I know you can't count for, for under three months, I think, right? Would you say that number goes up because of?
Mostly it does, I have a kennel in town that probably has fif- uh, twenty to twenty-five dogs, depending on how she's moving them.
So she has dogs that move litters two at a time.
Right.
Potentially have thirty-five, forty dogs.
Well, with the puppies, but she, if she doesn't have a, a male or a female that works out, she moves it out and brings something else in, or if she finds something that's better than what she has, she brings it in. So sometimes I go there, she has twenty dogs, sometimes I go there, she has twenty-five. Most of my other kennels are probably fifteen.
So would the kennel then be a pack of collection of adult dogs, or did we not get into that then? Cause obviously we're mixing and matching definitions from the state.
Because the, uh, the Mass General Law states that dogs under a certain age are not part of that.
Six months or whatever, right?
I think, well, I think at six months you have to register them, so.
We'll think about it.
Chairman, I'll make a motion, we table this in the next meeting, and, uh, put some thought into it. And try to maybe get some finalization in August.
A second motion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, okay. That is tabled till our next meeting, whenever that is, twenty-eighth meeting?
Twenty-first?
August twenty-first?
I had August twenty-eighth, which is the fourth.
Is it?
Yep.
Seven fourteen, oh yeah, this is twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth?
Yeah, twenty-eighth.
Okay, moving on to license renewal letters, um. This has been is formally thrown at us now to try to resolve this, uh, you know, even though we weren't receiving notification that, uh, people not licensing their dogs. Um, Todd and I played with these things for probably a month or so already.
Since June fourth.
Yeah, so, um. Hey, I had thought about making it all just a generic letter, one letter, then we thought about, maybe we'd rather send it to those that have, we know have a known kennel. Uh, or did have a known kennel, but haven't renewed their kennel license, and they may still have it. Um, as far as individual dog license renewals, uh, single dogs that come and go, a lot of people have, uh, dogs either deceased or they're, uh, picked up a new dog and didn't do it, so didn't license their animal. Um, states the fines that are consistent with uh, Mass General Law for vaccinations against rabies and for licensing. It, it also is consistent with the fines. The only thing that I think we should consider, cause we don't license dogs over here, and we don't have any records. That we should actually have nothing to do with this, other than send out the letters, like.
Right, it says here, the Board of Health, to bring the, your receipt, uh, your receipt of this letter to the Board of Health with proof of rabies vaccines.
That should be done over there.
That should be done over there, because she's the only one that can license the dogs.
Questions should probably go to also town clerk. Somebody calls up and said, my dog, my dog passed away, no longer have a dog. And now we gotta call them up, so it's a duplication of effort. And I think where it says, uh, please advise this office so it may update our files. That office is the town clerk's office. So I think all, any, any feedback or a response to these letters should go to town clerk.
Cause we're not gonna process any of it.
I agree, I think that, that, just that language just needs to be changed a little bit to.
Okay.
Regarding the, the town clerk, and then maybe whoever we send a letter out to for both of these, both kennel and just the regular dog licenses. A list be kept, and maybe the town clerk can keep it when they come in, she just checks it off, maybe once a week, whatever.
She already has that list, it's several hundred dogs right now.
So this is my other issue with, um, where you'll have ten days from the receipt of this letter. The issue is, the only way to get receipt of the ten days is certified or constable. And if you have hundreds of dogs, you're looking at tens of thousands of dollars in certified mail charges, so.
So you don't say pick a date?
I, um, I, I, I do believe the kennel ones should be sent certified. Because that's, that's a very different situation, I think.
There's only like four of those, I think.
Yeah, there's not too many kennels out there.
Once it's squared away, the kennel license issue should be sent certified or constable, whatever you find suitable. Uh, the other ones can put regular mail, um, and pick, pick a date.
Whatever the date is, like a couple weeks from when it's gonna go out.
Yeah, yeah, uh, you, I mean. By the time it goes out, gets in the mail, things, uh, you could say September first, or, you know, the twenty-eighth. If you wanna say by August twenty-eighth, and we can get it by five P M, and we can get a list from the clerk and see what's left.
Oh, like right before our meeting?
Yeah. Is that some?
It does. They've sent out two already, this would be the third, um. You're right about certified, send a certified today with six eighty-five, so we, we can't, uh.
But I, the kennels, hold them out to ten days, no, no date, that, that'll be.
Yeah, that's a little easier. I think we, we wanna go more than five P M on the day of, because the town clerk's gonna have to produce that list and get it to us, so we might wanna make it like the
Day before.
The day before, so they have a data process.
By, by closing on the twenty-seventh, so four thirty P M on.
Whatever day.
Now, the town clerk has expressed, um, concern that she wants to see this letter go before it goes out. Cause obviously she's the one that's gonna be doing all the work, so.
They're, they're gonna send it out, she has the mail merge, from what I understand. They don't have labels, they don't have a program for us to print labels to, and, uh, they do, Pam does a mail merge somehow, she said. Now, the ten days, okay, we're gonna keep that with the one that's gonna certify for the kennels, how about the regular one?
Uh, that, that'll be regular mail, and they need to have everything back by August twenty-seventh at four thirty P M. Cause that, that's.
That's a.
Yeah, yeah, as long as it's out within the next, you know, two weeks.
No, we're not gonna, that's not gonna happen, so. No. Cause Sue's got it, she wants also town council to review it.
Yeah, she also said town council should review it, cause we're quoting M G Ls.
So pick, just pick your date in September then.
So thirty days from the date, we send out the letters?
Yeah, what, we won't set a date, just once everything's squared away, just pick a date that's thirty days out.
So here's, here's my concern, not that, not with the letters, my concern is, say this takes us until October to get this out. They're gonna register the dog November, December, and they're gonna have to redo it in January. And then if you stop finding them, we're gonna have people in here waiting out to the street. Not that that's an excuse, cause they should do it, cause it's only five dollars when it goes out, but.
Well, why, why can't we work with the clerk to prorate the rest of this year and have them come on for the remainder of this year, and the entire next year?
That's fine.
I talked to her about waiving the, the late charges this year, uh, because now they're up to fifteen dollars.
Obviously, this letter, whatever's in place, next year we'll be able to roll with it.
Well, after April. Well, it's April something, but we always give them until after the rabies clinic, because a lot of people come to the rabies clinic and do their licensing and get their rabies vaccine. And I don't want them to be held.
Right, but immediately, we can send it out immediately, the letter will be ready to go, next year.
This is an interesting question, which may or may not be relevant, but there's over two hundred, did you say, or hundreds?
Cause there were over three hundred last I checked.
How many dogs are licensed, how many dogs do we have in town?
I just had a license, which is now gone, cause my old email is gone, um, I, I wanna say it was eight hundred and something, or it was nine hundred. And, and if there's hundreds that we st- we know of, there's at least four hundred that we don't know about. Because they go to Tractor Supply and we don't get them, they go to Petco and we don't get them, or the vet just decides, I'm not gonna send them out for whatever reason. Or it's a traveling vet, cause sometimes people that have farms, the vet does everything on the farm, and you don't get those sent in usually.
But that's a different problem, places are vaccinating and not telling people, right?
Right, but that's not us, that's the state, and they, they work on that, but that's kinda hard, because.
Okay, what I'm gonna do, I think, is probably make the amendments to these two, send it to Sue, and then send it to David Gay. And we'll figure out the dates from there.
Date to be determined, yeah.
You know.
For the second one, the first one is, when it's done, just get it out, cause that's a ten day, there's no dates, that's, there's only four or five of those.
I don't care if they buy a kennel license now and then have to buy another one, because that's something, our kennel licenses are very cheap. Considering what most of these kennels are breeding in there.
This is very, that's, that's a very different situation than getting my dog license, so.
Alrighty, we'll continue to work on most of our next meeting. Everything is pushed forward. License renewal letters, Title V inspector application.
So Ross has been working diligently to, um, come up with our application for system inspector. We started with the base of the accepting scholar, and kinda added to it, but this is what we've come up with so far.
Fifty dollars.
We came down to twenty-five on that one.
No, we went back up to fifty.
Did we?
Yeah.
I don't remember.
You're right, I don't know where I went back up to fifty, but he says it did, that's all right.
I know we were fifty for the inspection reports, and I thought it was twenty-five for license, then we determined all the work that has to go through for the office to process it, fifty dollars covered the.
I thought we left it at twenty-five, what's on the fee schedule?
I thought it was twenty dollars.
Whatever, whatever's on the fee schedule is what it was.
Fee schedule online, yeah.
Sorry, I don't remember, I don't think it is. Cause remember, you can't, you can't scroll down far enough to get at it, but they're all on the comment. The orange folder's right on the.
Well, that meeting, when we first discussed it, which was the last one or one before, it should be on, being broadcast now somewhere. That we can watch. I'm pretty sure we said it, I know it was fif- we s- I thought we said it was twenty-five. And the fee schedule, when it was, uh, printed, said fifty, which I thought was an error. And I thought we all agreed that it was, but now it's fif- so I don't know anymore.
My recollection is the same as yours, as the chairman.
Fifty dollars per year?
Yes, it is.
So it is.
Now you type that, huh?
I don't know what we added.
I, I just don't think it's right.
We could look back in the minutes, it's not that you have, we have to do this, I mean, we can table it all four minutes out.
I mean, if you wanted to approve it, you're gonna prove it subject to the act.
The, the application's fine, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Title V inspector application, uh, pending verification of the, the fee.
Second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, yeah, that, no, carries. Um, do a little homework and see, no, it was twenty-five or fifty, but we'll find out. Stormwater agent job description.
So this job description was drafted by the Stormwater Committee, and the Board of Health needs to review it, and then we will send it along to the town administrator, who will bring it to the selectmen for their. The Stormwater Committee discussed keeping it separate and not including it in the health agent job description.
I completely agree.
But at the moment, the Board of Selectmen are still contemplating keeping it.
You can't, you can't do that because, not that I, whatever you want to say town be, but it's inevitable, it's at, at some point. About fifty years or whatever, maybe, uh.
Ten.
Ten? Regardless, um, to, to replace the health agent and try to expect the health agent to also be able to follow under this job description, good luck. Really, good luck to the town, because there's health agent jobs open right now, that don't even have higher level job description that Todd has, just for health agent, that can't be filled, so, at a higher pay, no less. So, i- it'd be setting the town up for a very bad situation when it comes time to be.
Yeah, it's, it's gotta be separate, and, and if they choose to put it together somehow, it's gonna have to be.
At some point it will have to be separated, yeah.
Um, are you on your regular pay ra- pay rate yet?
No.
Because this has been.
It's being held up pending the job description being added into.
Yeah, we.
Cause that's the way the selectmen voted on it.
Yeah, so, a portion of the Board of Selectmen want it within the health agent job description, a portion of the Board of Selectmen uh, take our position, that says it should be separate. So until it gets resolved, uh, from what we're doing now. That portion of the Board of Selectmen will argue the, uh, job description. job description and why it should be separate. So hopefully, if we approve this or the board of the board of selectmen, it'll get squared away.
As long as it's kept separate. I mean, should Todd leave or things get too busy with the board of health and just can't at the time, at least if it's separate, you don't have to go back and deal with rewriting job descriptions again and everything else. I mean, this, you could take it and put it away till you can find someone else to replace it. You can base this off, what, an engineering firm we contract with, should be doing whatever it may be, so. I have no problem. Do you have any issue with the job description as it's written?
No, and and actually, yeah, I I help with it, so I'm, I'm okay with it. Like, say, the issue is, for me, it doesn't matter whether it's part of it or not. It's still me. It's, at some point, it should be separated.
From from a human resources standpoint, it's ridiculous to combine it.
I think as time goes on, stormwater's gonna be more than three hours a week. I think it's gonna become more of a five to ten hour a week job.
More and more.
Probably more than three hours a week now, but.
There's a lot of not doing with stormwater, and the committee's not doing with stormwater because we don't have the time.
Does Mallory feel it should be separate?
I don't know what Mallory felt.
I can shed some light on that. So I feel the same way you do. I similarly have two roles that I now perform. I asked them to be separated, and the answer was no, be combined. And when I brought up the same concerns that you have, I was told that when and if I ever terminate my employment with the town, they would have to reassess whether those positions should be split or not. So that's, that's the answer that I got. I wasn't in a position to argue. I don't plan on going anywhere, so I'm fine with it the way it's written. But I did tell them that it's not common to find someone, not that I'm that unique, but to find someone who's willing to take both those roles in the position that I I I was, you know, hired for. So I share your concerns. My feeling is that it'll probably end up being combined, based on my experience.
Well, at least it's already written for the future.
But that, but does that mean we have to revise the board of health agent job to include the stormwater agent duties before I can, before it it gets implemented?
Yes. I think that's a question for the town administrator. Maybe her position has changed since I had my discussions with her, but.
Unless the selectmen change the vote, that's the way it was voted, so.
Okay.
Then then, yeah, your your job script and that you're working on it now have to be changed.
So we just have to pull out like three or four paragraphs out of that and sort it in.
Yeah, just a little bit of it. Only three hours worth, though.
Yes, only three hours, so.
However, at our last stormwater meeting, we also made a determination that three hours is not enough for someone to, you know, do that well effectively. So we are gonna use some of the fees that we collect from the permitting side of things to get third party review on any project that we think needs oversight. So, you know, we we are conscious of the fact that there's no way you can do everything that's needed in three hours.
Good. So I guess check with the town administrator and but if they, if they choose that it can be separate, I have no, no issues with this job description.
I think that that portion of the board of selectmen will put it together.
Yeah, I have a feeling that.
I think we should approve the job description.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the job description of the stormwater agent slash inspector as typed.
Second of motion. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Anyone? See, and no further discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We'll send this over to board of selectmen. I think I got five of these already.
The exercises?
Yes. Okay, we're ready to move on. Item five F, we discuss an act, Friends of the Dayton Public Library, Taste of Dayton and Beyond this year. Food permit waiver request.
They had a couple of vendors from other towns that said, well, if it says Taste of Dayton and we're from Somerset or Tom. You know, do we belong? Should we? So that's why they added the and beyond. So there is a letter in there with them requesting.
I think we wait till last, yeah.
Yeah, we did.
What you did was a thirty, one thirty-five dollar temporary food permit to cover all of the vendors.
Think that's, that's fair.
It is very fair.
Just, I mean, they threw a lot of food vendors there. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we allow the temporary food permit as one permit and one fee for all the vendors at at the Taste of Dayton and beyond.
I will second that motion. Motion made second. Any further discussion? Anyone? Okay, see, none. All's in favor? Aye, opposed? All right, that was a good deal. Item number five G. We discuss an act, Dayton Fire Association, Touch a Truck Food Permit Waiver Request.
Now, this one, you completely waived the fee last year. They were selling. This year, it's eliminated food punch. It's it's not.
They do their own stuff, right? They don't have any vendors in.
All the money goes to.
Dayton Fire?
No, of course. They they donate the money out. They they choose one or two people who have.
They posted what it was, but I can't remember what it is.
It's all written in here.
Somebody from Tom?
Yeah.
I don't remember that. Fire fighter son or a policeman's son or something like that.
Yeah.
So it goes to families in need?
Yes.
Yep, yes, thank you.
The motion to waive the food permit?
Mr. Chairman, staying consistent with prior years, I'll make the motion to waive the fee for the Dayton Fire Association, Touch a Truck Food.
Second of motion. Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? See, none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I forgot to say aye. And lastly, we will discuss an act, Dayton Rehoboth Grid Iron Club Food Permit Waiver Request.
What you've done previously with them is you just half the fee, you waived half, and that was because the inspector has to go out and do the pre-opening inspection.
It's a seasonal, not a day.
And it is, it's seasonal, correct. So there's a couple of inspections that still need to be done. The only thing with this is I haven't processed it as I normally would due to the fact that the budget is still up in the air. From what I understand, even if the budget passes, we're past the place that we can implement fall sports because nobody can practice or anything like that. So it would have to be winter sports. That's what I've heard. It may be wrong. They may have done. When Mr. Whitmore came in to drop off the application, he was very happy. They were just told that the kids could practice, that it was going to, but he came back in the next day with his liability insurance and said pretty much what he was told the day before was now known void. Right, because they had, they weren't sure. They were using money that they couldn't use from prior year to pay for sports. So it's still very up in the air, and if they're not practicing, I don't know what's gonna happen. No, I I have the check held. If you want to approve this pending, they have the funds because if I deposit it, I won't be able to get it back.
So I I I don't want to, I I don't have a problem doing the permit, and and I would do the reduced rate fifty percent for nonprofit like we have in the past. That's fine because it is seasonal, not a temporary single day like the other ones are. However, I also don't want them to pay the fee and not be able to do anything. So I'll sign it, and maybe we hold it until we find out what the status is for the fall. If it is gonna happen, then we, you can finish processing it. I I have no problem signing the permit at the reduced rate.
That sounds good.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we allow the reduced fifty percent nonprofit rate for the grid iron at D R.
Second of motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
So just hold it. I don't know. Just want to tell them that it's approved, but we're gonna hold it so that way they don't get stuck paying money for something that they can't.
I'll add a note tomorrow. I'm sure they'll appreciate the board doing that. I couldn't hold off submitting it because the next time we meet, we're only meeting once a month. They, if it is approved, they will have already started.
All right, moving on to number seven. We skipped six.
Actually.
Really?
Just a.
Oh, public input, okay.
Back to, back to the grid iron. Should it not happen, but they wind up doing like one or two things in the fall. I want to just tell them that they can get it temporary one day.
Oh, okay.
Cut it in half still?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just that way.
Because they may still do fundraisers.
Right, if something does come up, you know, we'll, we'll work with them. Sorry.
Anybody have any public input? That was anybody?
Actually, I I do. This afternoon, Mass Department of Public Health in regards to the arbovirus and the mosquitoes, sent out notification that Triple E is is very well in southeastern Massachusetts. Good handful of positive mosquito samples came back for Triple E or Eastern Equinus Afflitis in Rehoboth, Easton, Bedford, Free Town, I think Lakeville, Fairhaven. So it's it's here. It's very early in the season. I think it's gonna be a bad year, and now we're gonna get more heat and humidity and just everybody needs to to use caution when they're outside during peak mosquito hours, dusk to dawn. Try to wear long sleeves, long pants, use bug repellent. So that's my input.
Very close. Okay, thank you for that, Matt. Authorized expenditures, payroll, bills.
First, textile recycling. We took thirty-seven hundred pounds out of our trash pickup this month, or June. So, yeah, it was another good. So we got a check from Simple Recycling. Is it forty, thirty-seven dollars? It's not, but we took all that tonnage out of there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the tonnage is safe.
It's like a ton and a half.
So we don't get a lot of money, but it's money we're not spending on the other end.
Yes, we saved a hundred and sixty-five dollars and we made thirty dollars, so.
I haven't heard any more issues recently.
That's good.
Nope, we had one call, then stuff was missed, and he went, worked back out once it.
Oh, that's good. It's good. I actually tested the system this week for the first time. Picked up my pink bag.
They give you a new one?
Yes.
They gave us two and me.
Well, did you put two out?
No.
Oh.
E R. special. I thought they were stuck together.
Actually, I think I got two also.
So the bill paid for the month was forty-five thousand, five hundred, nineteen dollars, and our payroll was sixty-one hundred.
I remember this. Oh, was there anybody happened to see? Never mind. Not gonna bring it up. No, I just wondered if there was any issue with the amount that we pay Rehoboth.
I do have all of that. I wasn't sure if that, I haven't heard anything.
Oh, it must have got paid.
It got paid.
Okay, sounds good.
Because I wanted to check in after because I got a couple of texts wondering if they, it was paid, so I went next door to make sure that they were being paid.
Good, all right. I didn't know where that would have gone, but we approved it here and sent this, so. Okay, anything to report?
I did have one case of somebody calling upset about a dog in a house. I did go there. This was on Saturday in the heat of the day. The house was definitely cool, the inside of the house was definitely cool, and the outside of the house, they had no air conditioning. So the dog was not in distress, so the dog stayed where it was. I have a few other things going on between an animal cruelty case that I'm working on and the dog, the dog, the mother dog and the puppies. The mother dog has been adopted, as far as I know, to a police department. And this is from, maybe it's up, and is going to be a working dog. The puppies, I believe, right now, we have three that are adopted. We have five that need to go out to adoptive there in foster homes and need to be adopted. The last one is blind. So if the person that's fostering is not gonna keep it, we're gonna need to find that dog a special home. Those dogs are not around here. We made, I made sure of that. So we're working on that. Until they are gone, we're still responsible for those puppies. And mom, when she gets paid, will be responsible for that, but.
Okay. That's it?
I think so.
Okay. Now, you mentioned, let's talk about it. No, I said, I I think it's okay to talk about it since we know you want to have some type of community forum on educational.
Yes. Well, there's a few things with the tornado yesterday it brought to mind because I was supposed to watch a webinar last week but couldn't get my email, so that all worked. But it was about emergency preparedness and stuff like that, and we need to, on the animal side, be a little more proactive than we are. And FEMA has already said since everything that happened in Louisiana, that they won't pay towns if they don't have a good preparedness plan for animals. And, I mean, that tornado, they got fifteen minute warning. Granted, they didn't have to open shelters or anything like that, but people need to know what they need to do and what they need to have, and that they can't leave their animals behind if they leave.
Can you make the meeting Tuesday morning?
Yes, I'm gonna be at the meeting Tuesday morning.
And our intern will be there too, so.
Okay, good. Did we add her on the agenda or not?
Um, actually, I didn't add it on the agenda. I just invited her to the meeting, so.
That should be enough.
Yeah.
Because whatever she comes up with, we're gonna have to develop a policy, and then that would be adapt, that would be on the agenda in the future, so.
Right, you'll need to incorporate it into however we change the disaster committee policy to emergency preparedness and.
Okay, that's good.
So when Stacy brought this up today, I looked at her and I said, I always thought dogs in a tornado went to the Emerald City, but I guess I was wrong.
But we have more, I'm not even just thinking dogs and cats. I'm thinking farm animals. We have a lot of farms in this town. Most of your farmers have plans. But if they can't move, move them or their, now their barn is not working and they can't milk, or you've got a horse, I mean, how many years ago did we have a horse barn that the roof was ripped off? We had to find places for those horses for a good amount of time. So we need to have all that. People that are willing to take in other animals, which it's kind of hard, but.
We don't have anything going on with the agricultural school now.
They do not want, and I don't blame them, they have a closed herd. They don't want to bring in things that we can't prove that aren't vaccinated or aren't healthy. Granted, you know, most farmers will tell you, well, they're fine, but most farmers do all their vaccinations and stuff themselves.
So really, I'm thinking about this linearly because I've been in areas that have been hit by tornadoes. I think the only thing that we can do, because you don't have a lot of time to prepare, would be maybe have a policy where there's an instant social media blast and perhaps a reverse call system like the school has where we tell people to take shelter and don't forget your pets, et cetera, et cetera. Other than that, I really don't know what we can come up with.
I'm thinking not just tomatoes, I mean hurricanes. I don't want to jinx this, but when was the last time we had a decent hurricane here? And my husband tells me every, my husband tells me all the time.
Let the record clearly show.
My husband tells me all the time, this is the year. This is the year, yeah, we're overdue. So I want to make sure, or a blizzard where people can't get out or they can't be in their houses, we need to have, you know, we used to have a barn next door. Every time the power went out, they couldn't milk, so my husband blow them milk by hand, you know. We've got to make sure they take care of this. It hurts, hurts, and then and then they get mastitis, which then they can't be milked for ten days while they're being treated, so that's if you get a herd that has mastitis, that's ten days of nothing.
Yeah. So if we have barn permits and we have all the dogs licensed, I know we don't have cats, but there's 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 a way right there to be able to reach the majority of our people that have animals, which is part of this, we started the barn permit thing, so we can start knowing where they are and we can start implementing ways of doing this, so.
Did we ever get the reverse nine-on-one time or?
I don't think so, but I haven't asked since we have the new communication system.
I'm gonna ask, just to, I'll find out.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have anything else, Doc?
Um, I've started working my three additional hours starting July first, um, and um I'd say it's making a difference, but I think part of it's because the office has been a little bit quiet, so I was actually able to review like six stormwater permits. We got the stormwater permit up and running and got that taken care of, um, making some headway, my desk is getting cleaner, I got my new desktop computer, which is wonderful, so, um, have had a lot of perk apps come in, and scheduled a lot of perks in doing that. Uh, we did get a piece of mail and I'd like to make a motion that we have Matt fill out the questionnaire that we received from Matt, uh, Mass Division of Public Health because I don't wanna fill it in.
I started filling it in, Matt, it was.
And she said, I got questions. I said, I know, can fill this in for us? Because I'm guessing you're getting one rain, yeah?
Oh, you get this every year.
So, um, if Matt would be so kind as to fill it in, that would be wonderful. Um.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, other than that, Kevin's been uh doing some restaurant inspections, um, and doing that and Jim and I have driven around for a few other little things and um gotta send out some letters and take care of some things, but otherwise the last couple, month has been the way it's supposed to be, so.
I do have something else, just as an FYI for everybody, um, the strawberry festival, they had, they were going to have animals there. I did not find out until three days before, and if you have a petting zoo, you need to be USDA certified. They were not. The only ones that I let go were the pony rides, um, but I shouldn't have let anybody go on the property. So if anybody calls for a petting zoo or they're gonna have animals or something, I need to know because I need to get ahold of the USDA, make sure they have the right permits, they have all the animals vaccinated, they have the insurance they're supposed to have because we could have a big to-do if we had some, pig bite somebody or whatever up there, so.
Through the board, if we know that this establishment did it without doing, taking proper protocol, perhaps the sport should be proactive, send them a letter informing them that this is not permitted act and this is the process and procedure in the future.
I I will agree with that. We only seem to have the one, but we don't have anything like in our regs for getting a permit for if you're gonna have it or whatever, so uh the only way they would know is if they happen to reach out. And I'm not talking about the strawberry festival, I'm talking about if somebody else decides they wanna have a birthday party and have a.
School already knows, because we had a problem at the school, we had somebody in town that said she was a petting zoo, brought the animals to the school and one of the rabbits scratched somebody. Nothing happened about it, but come to find out after I was told, doing research, she was not USDA certified and none of our animals had ever seen a vet. So we need, yeah, we need to know.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is these people wouldn't know until like after, like you should recreate a permit for it.
Right, a birthday party, uh, that's, but definitely schools, anything that's public, like the school system and strawberry festival or something that they have down here that they decide. I mean, rightfully so, the animals that they do on.
Cow chip?
Not cow chip, um, but tree lighting. Never have I been asked if, you know, they're okay or anything like that. Um, so, you know, we've gotta pay attention to, especially if we have somebody riding on a donkey.
Wait, have you had those tree lighting?
We have in the past. Somebody riding, riding a donkey, or we had sheep or something like that, and, you know, everybody wants to go pet them, which I understand that, but we have to make sure of that.
So I don't necessarily, I mean, we don't need a permit necessarily, but even if we had a policy saying you've gotta do this so that people know, because a lot of people might, you know, call the office or look online to see what it is, I don't know, I just.
Can you send me a reference?
I didn't know anything about it.
USDA regulation?
I will, I have to, I have to call them because it wasn't, I did not know they need to be USDA certified until I talked to somebody at the NSPCA. And go, oh, this is not us, we need to.
Makes sense.
We need to be.
Never would have thought about it though, I guess, so, but.
I mean, you could draft us something, you send it out to those local businesses that may.
Because a lot of these places are gonna probably serve food at their event too, so there would be a way to get, if we had an information packet to say here.
Yeah.
Instead of just contact Stacy and she forgets to tell them they need insurance or something, it just might, here's your checklist, so.
Okay. Very good.
I have one thing, if you don't mind.
No, no, no.
Okay. Um, this this is just related to the Board of Health, uh, as a department, so to speak, not any specific thing. Um, the selectmen have approved phase two of the lower level town hall office renovation project, which is going to reconfigure the lower level of the town hall to accommodate three offices. Um, one of the reasons that was initiated was when we moved here from next door, I was originally supposed to be in a space where the zoning board of appeals is located. I gave up that space at the request of the board of appeals because they thought it was, the space that was allocated for them was too small. So, um, fast forward a year and a half later, I'm in that space, it's too small, too small for me. So the board of appeals will be going back over to town hall, uh, in a temporary office until the renovations uh come into full fruition. That is gonna happen uh within the next two weeks. So logistically, the plan is to move the ZDA back to lower level of town hall, which will be its permanent location. We're actually gonna create a land use department between planning and zoning. I'm gonna move back into the original space that I was intended to have. My space is perfect for your health agent, and then that'll open up
For the office.
three more walls for you to put your file cabinets. So your area downstairs is quite congested, so this is actually gonna alleviate two problems, problem for me and a problem for you. So that's all gonna happen prior to your next meeting, so you probably see the changes going on. The desk that Todd currently occupies, we felt that could be for your intern and or.
Or when Stacy comes in.
Right.
When you guys come in to sign permits instead of them being on the counter.
Right, exactly. Um, so I think that's gonna alleviate a lot of congestion down there on many fronts and, um, I I, sorry I didn't ask, but I figured you wouldn't be in opposition of getting more space, so, yeah.
That's good.
We need more space.
If you wanna talk to us, you can just draw a hole in the slide.
I made those removable.
I know.
Yeah, those, call them top killing dividers, so.
Oh, we'll be needed.
Okay, well, thanks, that sounds good. Now, the uh zoning board will temporarily going over the planning board or forever?
No, they're gonna be a joint office permanently, okay, yeah.
Yeah, you said that, didn't you?
Right, but they're gonna occupy your current space temporarily and I feel that that's a good move for a few reasons, but most importantly, so they can figure out the logistical things that they need to work together as a team, and then when I move them into their permanent space, we'll know exactly what works and what doesn't work. So I think it's a good, it's a good maneuver, um, on many fronts. The low, I don't know if anybody's seen the lower level of town hall, that we have a new meeting room. Um, of course, I'm partial, but uh it it came out really nice.
It did, yeah.
It's a bright new space, um, it's accessible, it's, um, you no longer have, will have a display or a presenter set up in the pathway of the egress, um, so it's a nice space and that will allow all of the boards and committees that occupy town hall to use that space, which frees up the room that's needed in the office areas for some of these expansions. So it's gonna work out well.
Okay. Is correspondence?
No.
Just what Matt had said with Triple E.
Okay. You wanna approve some minutes?
Yes.
June twelfth, June twenty-sixth.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as typed for June twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen and June twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
Our second emotion? We all were here, right? Motion made second, uh, any further discussion? See none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carries? Anything else before we adjourn? Then I'll make the ten emotion to adjourn.
Some.
Uh, second emotion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you, Cable, thank you everyone, have a good evening and weekend.